Six thirty we'll call you into order. Please lead us.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members of presence. Two words of honorable mention given.
Yes, it has.
Two agenda two information discussion items to A the Morris Leatherman survey results and possible referendum.
All right, so just to give the public a little background, back in November, the board had decided to poll our community to see what the priorities of the school or the school district were as well as the tax tolerance for a potential referendum, Morris Leatherman Company conducted that survey. Peter Leatherman is here, a first time this agenda item, Peter Leatherman is here remotely and he will be presenting the results of that survey. So, Mr. Leatherman, take it away.
Super. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and I apologize if I do have to mute myself, drink tea or whatever, but I've got what it sounds like other people have in the room or other family members have going on right now. So, just to review with everybody what we took with the methodology, we spoke with four hundred randomly selected residents across the school district. The four hundred sample is projectable to plus or minus five percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. The size of the sample, the, the, the size of the, the random sample is what can makes the margin of error, not the percent of the population. So, a four hundred across the state of Wisconsin or the Richland School District is plus or minus five percent. Average interview time was seven minutes, non-response rate was six and a half percent. The interviews were conducted between December sixteenth and December fifteenth of last year. We'll put up the demographics, just so you can see the profile of who answered the survey. The purpose of the demographics is twofold. First off, we want to validate the, the sample versus updated census information on key demographics such as households with children, homeowners versus renters, households with seniors. But then also, we can look at statistically significant differences between those groups. In the district, thirty-four percent have been in the district for ten years or less. Well, twenty-eight percent have lived in the district for over thirty years. The median comes in at about eighteen years is the typical longevity of the community. Fourteen percent indicate that they have a preschooler, twenty-three percent have a child attending the Richland School District, and seventy-three percent are empty nesters. Now, empty nesters does not connotate an age. That's simply lack of presence of a child. So, we could have a thirty-one-year-old without a child. They're labeled as an empty nester for the purpose of the methodology. So, it's important to keep in mind as we're going through that these results are the community as a whole. And basically, three out of four are non-parents, one out of four is your key constituency. One in four indicate that they rent. Thirty-four percent indicate that their home value is under two hundred thousand, while thirty-eight percent indicate that it's over two hundred thousand. The self-assessed in this also doesn't necessarily ref- reflect reality. It reflects the opinion of the person. Comes in roughly at about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Continuing with the demographics, thirty-four percent indicate that their high school grads are less. Thirty-one percent said indicated they had some college experience, albeit short of graduation. While thirty-six percent indicated they were college graduates, that includes those with master's degrees and doctorates. One of the key factors that impacted elections across the upper Midwest in twenty-three, and it appears that it's going to impact elections in twenty-twenty-four is the financial situation of the households. In your district, forty-nine percent indicate that they're financially stressed. That's what we're seeing right now in the last quarter of twenty-three as we end the year. It's down a little bit. Twenty-twenty-three was the worst year for people indicating they're financially stressed since the recession of two thousand eight, two thousand nine. We got to a high earlier in twenty-three where we had fifty-eight percent indicate that they were financially stressed. Right now, we're coming in into the high forties and you're at that point. For a reference point, before the pandemic, though, the norm of the financially stressed was about twenty-nine percent. Okay, so we're basically twenty percent more, and this impacts potential funding requests at a macro level, because there are a certain, the higher that number goes, you will have more people that would support something but simply cannot afford to support anything. And that's a key factor here. We, then if we look at the geography, fifty-two percent indicated that they were in the city of Richland Center, forty-eight percent in the rest of the district. And you know what? I'm gonna pause for a second. I apologize. My computer just flashed low battery. I didn't even think of it. Let me grab my cord and plug it in. I'll be right back. I'm sorry.
Court members in public, while he's doing that, I will say presentations are online in board docs and if any board members want to copy, you can get to that as well. So, all of these presentations you're gonna see came in today.
Super. All right. Sorry about that, folks. Going on to the last set of demographics, twenty-three percent indicated they were between eighteen and thirty-four years old. Well, forty-four percent are over the age of fifty-five. Typical resident in the, in the school districts about fifty-one years old. So, you do have a lot of longevity and you do have an older population and then fewer households with children. And then females outnumbered men by four percent in the sample. Before I go on, any questions on methodology or demographics? All right. We're gonna go through a series of questions upfront, and I call these atmospheric questions. The points of this and doing this over the last thirty years is understanding reasons for voting behavior. We check these atmospherics because on election day, we want folks to walk into the voting booth and make a simple cost-benefit analysis. What's being asked for? How much does it cost? And make the, the decision based on that. We don't want them to go in. We want to understand if they're going in with what we call baggage, that there's a symbolic no vote. They don't like board decisions. They don't like financial spending, those sorts of things. So, that's the purpose for these questions upfront is to make sure we have an understanding of what the atmospherics in the district are. That's the purpose of this first set of questions. So, an overall evaluation then on the quality of education in the school district. If we look at the favorable, it's seventy-eight percent favorable to twenty percent unfavorable to with two percent unsure. The quality of education rating has gone down across the upper Midwest since the pandemic. What differentiated school districts is always been the excellent rating. The, before the pandemic, the norm excellent rating was about twenty-one percent. It's gone down to ten percent, and the shift now has gone from people going from excellent to good and then good to only fair. So, I don't have the data point to where you were before, but there's only one school district out of over a hundred that we've tested the last three years where the excellent rating has maintained. Most have gone down statistically significantly by a third or even fifty percent. So, you're a little bit above the average on the excellent rating at fifteen percent. A couple of questions then, open-ended. They can tell us anything, then we collapse them down into categories. First off, what do folks like most about the district? Good teachers leads the list at twenty percent. You have thirteen percent pointing to the variety of programs, ten percent community involvement, seven percent high achievement stats, and seven percent sports, high-quality education, and a series of things in single digits. Not one thing stands out. Typically, districts fall into three buckets. The personnel side, the teachers, which leads your list, the variety of programs offered at thirteen percent, and then the academic quality. And if we combine high achievement stats, high-quality education, and good academics, that comes in at about eighteen percent. So, that's kind of the prioritization in your district. There's not one that stands out. Some districts are much more focused on curriculum. Others are much more focused on academic test scores and the quality of the classroom, and then some are focused on the personnel side. Yours is pretty much a statistical tie on what folks value. Now, if we ask what they like most, we always follow up with what's the most serious issue facing the district. You have one issue that it hits double digits and it actually goes into the twenties. And we would classify this as a, a concern, not a major concern. You don't have thirty, thirty-five, forty percent, but it is a significant concern with one in five, twenty-two percent indicating lack of funding. Everything else goes down to single digits, from lack of discipline to teacher shortages to declining achievement to bad economy to facilities needs. But the lack of funding stands out. What also stands out is down at the bottom, the nothing, at twelve percent. These folks are boosters. They see there's nothing wrong in the district. And they're supportive throughout, whether there's, whether it's the school board and administration, the financial spending, even potential funding requests. That booster corps also has evaporated coming out of the pandemic. What used to be a ten percent base is down to about a four percent base. So, you actually have three X of the motive boosters. One in eight would fall into the category of community boosters, which is relatively high over the last three years. Some specific perceptions that, does the district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Seventy-three percent agree with that statement. Norm of that right now is fifty-seven percent. It's an outstanding rating. Do the, do they receive a good value for the investment? Absolutely. Eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent. Have you spent past referendum funds responsibly? Yes, seventy-five percent. Do you do a good job of involving the community? On this one, the pandemic has caused this to go down and it has not rebounded. Before the pandemic, the norm was about seventy-five percent. It's gone down now to the high sixties, and you're at eighty-one percent, which is very strong. The pandemic made it hard for people to be involved in decision-making with, whether it's with their city, their school district, what have you. But then also, what we're finding is especially amongst non-parents, since the pandemic, they haven't re-engaged like they have in the past with their local community, much more focused on state and federal and international issues. So, you really do do a good job of involving the community. Satisfaction with decision-making? That has absolutely yo-yoed all over the place with the pandemic. You all have made difficult decisions from virtual learning to masking and all of those wonderful fun things during the pandemic. But you've landed in a very positive place in the minds of the community, with seventy-five percent satisfied with the decision-making, eighteen percent dissatisfied. So, it's a better than three to one on almost a four to one ratio. Norm of that now is two to one. And then the last question is really the first one, really important question, because this taps into core opposition. The question is, the schools are a good investment and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. We haven't told them whether it's an operating levy, a bond referendum, if it's fifty bucks a year or fifty bucks a month. What I'm curious in is how many people disagree with that statement from the outset. That nineteen percent is very low. Typically, what we saw in twenty-twenty-three was thirty percent to thirty-five percent in that core opposition. So, that doesn't mean that there's going to be overwhelming support for everything. It means your community is willing to have a conversation. You don't have the large subset of core opposition that many districts do. No job performance ratings, the superintendent and the admini- the school board and the superintendent and administration. I can tell it's a well-functioning school district because the ratings match. I can always know it's a dysfunctional school district if the board is highly rated and the superintendent's lowly rated or vice versa. You can see folks look at this and they see the governance and the administration as one entity. On the school board, sixty-eight to twenty-eight, the norm of that right now is fifty-six to forty. On the superintendent and administration, it's sixty-six, twenty-seven. It's about three to one, it's two and a half to one. Norm of that right now is about sixty-five, thirty-five. And then the closer you get to the kids, the more favorable ratings, your teachers are very highly regarded at eighty-five percent favorable. What's an overall assessment then of the financial management? Sixty-three percent rated favorably, thirty-one percent unfavorably, and six percent are unsure. The norm of this is fifty-one percent, which means half the districts are less than fifty-one percent, half or more. So, it's actually a very good rating. You do have a lot of financial credibility. Folks feel good about the stewardship of spending that the administration and the board have offered them in the past. Property tax hostility. You do not have the hostility that we see in many other areas. Twenty-twenty-three was not only defined by the economic stress in households, but then by property tax hostility. You have forty-one percent that indicate that their property taxes are high, fifty percent about average, one percent said somewhat low. I always joke and tell the board I have their names and numbers so you can call and thank them. I don't, but and then eight percent are unsure. On the school side, what's your perception of school taxes? Thirty-four percent, thirty-three, I'm sorry, thirty-four percent say they're high, forty-nine percent about average, one percent low, but then sixteen percent indicate that they're unsure. There's always an uptick. You have, many people don't realize that there's that, that their property taxes are divided up between city, county, and school district. The forty-one percent in the high category, the norm right now we're seeing at the fourth quarter of twenty-three in the upper Midwest is about fifty-eight percent in the high category. So, you're fifteen percent lower on this one. You're not a hostile property tax climate. I would call you a tax-sensitive climate. And once again, this doesn't mean that people are going to be willing to support anything. It simply means they're not going to reflexively say no simply because of property taxes. They're willing to listen. What this also tells us is if they have animus on property taxes, it's not focused at the school district, because the perception on the high category of the school district drops from forty-one to thirty-four. So, their frustration then would be at the city and county level. We don't know which one, but it's not at the school district. That's the good news. The bad news is, is pretty much the school district's the only one that has to go to voters to approve a property tax increase. Is the district adequately funded? This is pretty much what we see now is people don't know. Half the peoples, forty-four percent say yes, forty-nine percent say no, and seven percent are unsure. So, the adequacy of funding is going to be left for the school district to define what that means. Do the buildings and facilities meet the day, meet the needs of educating today's students? Yes, residents do believe that they do. Eighty-two percent say yes, nine percent say no, and nine percent are unsure. Now, the yes, though, is a soft yes. I tell, I tell clients, if this was at sixty percent strong yes, it would be difficult for a bond referendum, because people feel intensely. People do not feel that the, that the buildings and the facilities are in poor shape. Only nine percent. So, the story to tell, if you consider a bond referendum in twenty-four, is not that things are awful and they need to be fixed. It's how these improvements are going to move from yes to strongliness. Yes, and tying them back to the academics, the quality of the academics, and the programs that could be offered in the district schools. If folks heard that there was a property, the district was gonna ask for a property tax increase, would they be for all, against all, or are they persuadable? You start out dead even, meaning your core support is twenty-two percent and your core opposition is twenty-two percent. What we found in twenty-three, the norm was minus five, where we had five percent more opposition than support at the outset. So, you start at a level playing field and it's all gonna matter in how the persuadables break the potential funding request. We asked our let's make a deal question. How much would you be willing to support a, a property tax increase to fund facility improvements? Well, first off, thirty-one percent say nothing. We always want that to be under thirty-five percent. And we have that. We have, then have twenty-eight percent that are at seven dollars a month, and we have twenty-nine percent that are at fourteen dollars or more a month. The typical resident, if we take out the nothings, they're not gonna support anything, so we don't need to lower the dollar amount because of them. Those that are willing to support a property tax increase comes in roughly at eleven bucks a month. Okay? Is that number set in stone? It's not set in stone. There can be elasticity to that number, but there also could be retraction from that number. It depends on what's being asked for, which is why we go through the next set, the next slide. And we ask specifically on the components, and we ask, would you support a property tax increase for these items? You can see you have a clear hierarchy in your district. You have six items that are at sixty-eight percent all the way up to eighty-two percent. Safety and security, accessibility and ADA, technical ed space, air conditioning, air quality and HVAC, roofing and parking lots. Then we go down to fifty-nine percent at the auditorium and fifty-five percent each for turf and the field house and fitness center. This, yours was the fifth survey that I did in December for districts looking at potential referendums in early twenty-four, and this pretty much mirrors exactly what we're seeing. And what we're seeing is very reminiscent to what we saw in the first part of the recession of two thousand eight, two thousand nine. People will support half-to-haves. They're not as supportive as nice-to-haves. And regardless not to offend anybody, but a half-to-have revolves around the building structure, the academics and the curriculum. Nice-to-haves would be music, fine arts, and sports, and you can see that hierarchy played out on this chart. So, when we pull it all together and we ask folks, overall, do they saw, does this sound like a good idea? The set of improvements or a bad idea? Because you could see you have such high support for the top six. It nuts out at seventy percent indicating a good idea, twenty-six percent a bad idea. There's not a lot of intensity. It's three to one in favor of strong good idea to, to strong bad idea, but it's only twenty-one percent that feels strongly. We told them that the price tag was forty dot, forty mil- forty point four million dollars. Is that a fair price to them? Do they think so? Now, this question, this is just a sticker shot question. And it doesn't matter. I've done bond referendums at two billion, helped pass one last year that was four hundred and ninety-five million. Whatever the number we put in there, it doesn't matter. It comes in at about fifty percent saying yes and between forty and fifty percent saying no. It, it really, the, the, this number doesn't matter as much as people think, because what matters is how much it costs them. Forty million is an ethereal number. So, when we pull it together and we told folks on a hundred thousand dollar home, the monthly property tax increase would be fifteen dollars a month. In a two hundred thousand dollar home, it would be thirty dollars a month. So, if the median that is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're testing about a twenty-two dollar increase on the, on the median home in the district, which is about double the tax tolerance. And now you can see where the financial issues come in with folks. We have fifty-three percent that support, forty-one percent opposed, and six percent are unsure. Strong support and strong, strong opposition are identical. What are the reasons for the opposition? The cost is too high and their taxes are too high. So, while there is high support for those top six, the overall cost of everything is too much. The fifty-three percent indicates, you know, if it was going to go to the ballot, what typically happens if you call a question, you have a campaign, and if you have a good vote, yes. Typically, though, there's still attrition from this pristine environment, because there's been no campaign at this point in time. This is as good as it's going to get with this package. The typical regression is six to eight points, which puts you under fifty percent, but it's based on cost. So, what the data is suggesting, if you, if you can get down to move from the twenty-two dollars a month on the average house, if you get it down to the fourteen to sixteen-dollar range and you focus on the top six items, it would have a very good chance of success. Now, the question will come up on the bottom three items. They're not dead in the water in and of themselves. You know, on a field house fitness center, I actually presented last night to a district that had forty-one percent support. You have fifty-five percent. How it's impacting is the cost of the entire package. Would you do a second question? That would be a possibility, but it doesn't work in Wisconsin, because you can only do two questions and you have the potential operating levy in play. So, really, the data would suggest us to focus on the top six, bring that dollar amount to about fifteen dollars a month in order to have the greatest chance for success. What about support for a two and a half million dollar operating levy? And this one's driven by the fact because of the, the financing of debt payment structure that there would be no property tax increase. Sixty-nine percent support this with second, bottoms covered up here, with twenty-five percent opposing and seven percent are unsure. Strong support outnumbers strong opposition by four to one. What's the reason for support of the levy position? People are rational. Twenty-eight percent see it as there's no tax increase. They're getting something for free. Twenty-eight percent education's important, eleven percent the child in the district, three percent needed, three percent to maintain programs. What's the reason for opposition? Eleven percent no children, six percent poor spending, five percent would like the tax decrease, the three percent say their taxes are too high. Regardless of the fact that this is would be a, a neutral impact of people's property tax statement, the discussion of the need for the levy, you don't sell a levy to go vote because it's no tax increase. You go sell the levy saying that this is needed and drive up the need portion and then add on, at the same time it's needed, it's not going to impact your property taxes. And then finally, where are folks getting their information? You have four, four sources of information that dominate the grapevine. The newsletter at twenty-three percent, the district website at twenty percent, the grapevine is alive and lush, nineteen percent, and the note, and the local newspaper at sixteen. Then we go down social media, email, teachers and staff. If we ask folks what the most effective way to receive information is, if we just look at this as print versus electronic, do they want to hold something in their hands? Mail newsletter and local newspaper is forty-seven percent. Do they want to push a button? District website, twenty-two, email, ten, social media, seven, e-newsletter, three. You have the electronic side at forty-two percent. So, a pretty even split. There's very overlap on demographics. The younger you are, the more likely you are to prefer electronic. Older residents are going to prefer print. But any sort of campaign, any sort of rollout in the communications on this needs to share both electronically and also in print to meet the needs of the community. So, that's the last side. I think I would just, I think I'll turn it over to Ellie, or do you want to open it up for questions?
Why don't we open it up for questions?
Questions for Mr. Leatherman?
I think he does a fantastic job of explaining it. Riveting and interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have one, one question. For the will, will support half-to-haves, not the ones to have to have. You said building curriculum. What was the third thing you said? What are the main categories? I didn't catch the last one.
Oh, well, we're looking at the different components on necessity. So, I mean, basically, if we're looking at building needs, deferred maintenance, safety and security, those sorts of things, then classroom and academic spaces, kind of lump those all together. Safety and security, just one caveat on that. I know some boards get concerned when they see that there's such high support for safety and security that they think, okay, maybe the community doesn't think we're doing a good job. You don't ask the question. Some districts have us ask the question, and it comes that the question is simply, does the district provide a safe and secure learning environment? Districts will have ninety-five percent of people say yes. They'll still have eighty to eighty-five percent of people support safety and security improvements. What's happened, I mean, like, I've been doing this thirty years. I go, with Columbine happened, this isn't to diminish it, but it was a blip in public opinion on safety and security. It lasted for about a year. What changed everything was Newtown, Connecticut, and Sandy Hook. And since then, safety and security is at the top of every district's list. And regardless, if they think their district's safe and secure, you can never be too safe. And like we saw this morning in Iowa, people are willing to invest in safety and security for whatever can be done to keep the kids. for whatever can be done to keep the kids safe in school. Uh but it really. I- if you think about the the half to halves revolve around the buildings, the classrooms and academics. The nice to haves are extracurriculars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Peter, do you mind just listening in while we do the rest in case questions arise?
Absolutely, I'm just gonna mute myself so I don't cough and act during your presentation.
I do, I do think we have one more question.
One more question.
With with the question of the levy uh referendum being forty million versus it being the two point five. Obviously, there's a range of things in between there. Do you see it, is it a sliding scale, so it's almost? Where it's a direct correlation between the bottom end and the top end? Or is there a bump if it's, you know, a halfway point is actually more uh or less supported versus the the full forty?
The the key is going to be the dollar amount on the median house. The closer you get to that fifteen dollars a month, as long as it includes those top six. Um and I I would argue, looking at that data, because that the the top six items have sixty eight percent support or more. You have the potential to go higher than that. Um but the one thing at twenty three was pretty much, it was not a good year for school district referendum. Um and it was driven not so much by the specifics in school districts, it was driven by the macro. Um and not knowing what's going to happen with macroeconomics, I side on the side of being conservative as much as possible. Um and and districts getting something as opposed to nothing. Some districts decided in twenty three to go all in. They they knew what the they needed and they wanted the public to support that. And many districts sacrificed getting something uh because they couldn't self-edit. Uh they are chose not to self-edit. Um and it it put things out there that just, you know, in an eighty million dollar package, had a ten million dollar auditorium that had thirty five percent support, it just became a lightning rod. Uh but I think, you know, that two and a half million dollar operating levy being tax neutral. You know, and I know some of that has been shared into the 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 debt service on the bond referendum to bring that down also. I mean, I think if whatever that number is, uh to get it down for the total tax impact for both questions to be at about fifteen dollars a month will be the critical piece on this.
Any other questions at this time?
I'll stay on though, if any come up during Ellie's discussion.
Appreciate that, I need just a second to flip Ellie's screen over.
All right, so facing, you know, that on Peter's, you know, presentation. First, I kind of wanted to go into like financial projections. Um. Basically, you, there's one scenario that you could do that we've worked with Baird on this. You could go for seven um in a uh debt referendum, seven, three, five, zero, seven million and two and a half operating, and that's zero tax impact to your community, okay? But then we wanted to look at, you know, because as Peter said, if you stick with right around fifteen dollars a month on an average house, from our calculations, the average house, we talked to the administration, we kind of did some research, talked to Eric. Right around a hundred and sixty one is what we're coming up with for an average house. We're happy to change that if, you know, you guys aren't comfortable, we want you to be comfortable with that number two. But that's kind of from our research and talking to the administration, that's what we agreed on. So that, if you do fifteen dollars a month on an average house, that gets you right around twenty, just over twenty seven million in the referendum. So with that, I'll let Steve go into the operating component on this, and then we'll go back and talk about some of the options for a capital referendum.
So as the board and probably the public have tuned in at all, they've heard me say that, you know, this referendum can be about people, property and programming, right? The people and the programming um would be covered under an operational referendum. People that we have, the staff that we have, um employees that we have and the programming centered around the opportunities that we have for students, curricular opportunities, those kinds of of things. Property is the buildings, the the structure, those would be part of a capital improvement project. Okay, so when we're talking about an operational referendum, referring more about the an operational referendum for people and programming, not the property. So with that two and a half million dollars, there are really two ways, whatever that number ends up being, um there are really two ways board can structure or ask for a referendum um vote. Okay, there is a recurring referendum and there is a non-recurring referendum. And a recurring, go ahead Ellie. A recurring referendum is one that the the if it is voted on by the stakeholders and approved. That is a one-time vote and it is approved forever. Okay, that that dollar increase will increase the revenue limit forever. All right, um that's, it's a positive from the standpoint that the district does not have to worry about losing that funding at any given point in time. All right, and with that, you then avoid the potential having to go back to referendum for operating if it's structured long-term, which is two and a half million dollars is structured in such a way that would try to get us out there in twelve, fifteen years with this operational. The negative side to a recurring referendum, however, is that you don't truly get dollar for dollar year after year, if you are a district of declining enrollment. Okay, um very simple math, if you have a hundred students in your district and you want to raise the levy by a thousand dollars, DPI is going to say you have a thousand dollars, you want a thousand dollars, you have a hundred students, we're going to raise the price per student ten dollars. Right, and that becomes, that's how you get your thousand dollars. However, if next year you had declined enrollment and you only have ninety five students, you only get nine hundred and fifty dollars. And if you drop to ninety students the next year, you're only getting nine hundred thousand dollars. And so whatever you have for enrollment at the time that recurring referendum is passed is divided out over that number of students. And then as that decline in enrollment happens, you don't get the full impact of the referendum people voted on. We are facing declining enrollment, we have about forty years left before we anticipate plateauing. So it's important to keep in mind that if we ask for two point five and the voters approve it and the declining enrollment happens, has nothing to do with open enrollment in or out, these are actual school age children that live in our residency. Then we may not get the full two and a half million dollars in three years, we may be down to two point two million, operating with three hundred thousand dollars less, okay? Um and the other negative with the recurring is it doesn't give school districts then the ability, without going back to referendum, the ability to change these in primaries, okay? The the next slide then kind of points out the positives and negatives of a non-recurring, a few more positives, but one big negative. Okay, if you look at a non-recurring referendum, you are asking the voters for a very specific dollar amount or a very specific timeframe. Okay, X number of dollars for X number of years, or X number of dollars in year one, X plus something in year two, a little bit more in year three, et cetera, all right? This does allow, um and there are neighboring school districts that rely heavily on uh non-recurring referendums. Every three or four years, they're going back for referendums. It does allow school districts to reassess where they're at, at the end of that cycle, whether it be three years or four years. With that, every three or four years, we go back to to ask community for their uh support. Um the community has a say every three or four years on how the district is doing, whether or not they're going to support that, whether or not they support the direction of the district. And regardless of what your enrollment does, the full amount is awarded every year. It's truly tacked on regardless of what your enrollment is. Now, the big negative with a non-recurring referendum is that you, your community can experience referendum fatigue. And if you get to a point where they don't support one, then you do have some drastic measures, because you're taking away a significant um portion of your revenue um at any given election, okay? Um any questions before I go to the next slide on the difference between recurring and non-recurring? The last couple of operational ones that our district has done, both two thousand sixteen and um, excuse me, uh two thousand and twenty was a uh and two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen was the technology, mostly centered around technology. Two thousand twenty was this operation, we both of those were recurring. Both of those have, uh we are not getting the full amount because we have significant less students in our districts. All right, so here are just some sample operational referendum options as it revolves around an operational referendum. You could, again, I'm just using this two point five million, that's kind of what we've been talking about. And um to the math around as far as uh minimal tax increase or no tax increase. You could ask for a recurring referendum where you get two and a half each year. They'll take the two and a half million dollars if supported, divided by the number of students that we have in our district. It's like eleven oh six, divide that number out. And as our enrollment decreases over the next four years, we would not get the full two and a half. But we would not have to go back for referendum in the future, um it would just be a one-time thing. You could also structure a non-recurring referendum and state to the public, hey, we need to earn your trust, we need to earn your support. Give us four years to show that we are moving this district in the right direction. We don't necessarily have to have the full two point five in year one, so we're only going to ask for two point three in year one, a little bit more to take care of uh inflation and increases in year three, a two, a little bit more in year three and a little bit more in year four. And then understand that we would have to go back for referendum in, you know, the spring of twenty twenty eight. At that point, you're not locked into having to do another non-recurring. You could do another non-recurring, you could reassess the needs at that point. Or you could then turn it into a recurring referendum at that point and ask the voters to support that. The reason I think four years is important to look at, non-re- non-recurring is is something that the board wants to consider is again, because our current freshman class is our last big class and significantly drops after that. Again, we're going from average class sizes up over ninety and a hundred to all classes under eighty two, right? So in eighth grade and below. So we do have a significant drop, we've stated this many, many times, um that's real, we're getting to the end of it. Um we may be better off to at least consider, what does it look like if we get through this decline in enrollment? Reassess our needs, show the public we're doing good things, and then look at asking for another referendum in twenty twenty eight. Not, it may have sounded like I'm supporting one or the other, I'm just trying to give you both options, because we really haven't talked about non-recurring referendums in years as much. Any questions on either of those? Or the way that's structured?
Just some quick math, uh just for for everybody's knowledge, when you average out the total of that four-year non-recurring, the average is two point four five. And so technically, visually, it seems to be less, even though you see the number increasing.
That that is correct, um and the reason for that would be that two and a half over the course of a decade is planning for the future, right? Whereas we don't necessarily need all of that right up front, and so the math is a hundred percent spot on. It's actually lasts over four years when you look at it that way. It also allows a little bit um lighter tax impact and you kind of ease into it as you're, as you're letting a little bit more issue. Observation. Okay, Ellie, I don't see any questions, I'll turn it back over to you for the capital side of things.
Okay, so you know, I, what we did here with um this hard point is we tried to break it out into the priorities that Peter talked about, okay? So you know, the thing that came in highest was safety and security, that's what um ranked highest among the priorities. So from you guys have, you know, you got the comprehensive report, so kind of looking at that, this is the thoughts and working with the administration, kind of the thoughts on the important things that you might want to consider moving forward with. Um these things total over six million. So it basically, it's like the power, the generators, um fiber cameras and the door fobs, putting um fobs throughout the every single building so they can per card access. Um also fixing the foundational repair at primary school, one of the walls is sinking, needs to be repaired and the office exit. Um some visitor parking expansion and front bus loop modifications. Um at the primary, also some traffic reconfigurations at the intermediate. At the intermediate as well, adding a door to the nurse's office and remove some of the exterior doors for safety there as well. Um the high school do office reconfiguration. And then lastly, at the high school, putting some hardscape play area in for the seventh and eighth graders. Any questions on that?
Your bus and car traffic reconfiguration at the intermediate, would that have included the expansion of parking for the teachers and staff?
I believe so, Brian, do you want to touch that?
Brian may not be able to unmute.
Oh, got it, I believe it does.
It it was included.
Yeah. Um the next highest was the accessibility and ADA requirements that came to two point two million total. So a lot of the toilet room upgrades, making them ADA accessible. Um sidewalk and curb repair, that's always the, you know, need for if you have wheelchairs or anyone like that, you want to make sure those are in good um condition. Art room casework and ADA sinks at the primary and intermediate. A main entrance ramp at the intermediate as well as the music room ramping, I believe that's removing the music room ramping. Um and then putting an asphalt path for the soccer, the baseball and the track and field for ADA accessibility at the high school. Any questions on those? Okay, next one was tech ed. That just comes in about three hundred ninety thousand is what those were. So um construction labs, free boot, expansion and ventilation. The auto lab have some more exhaust lifts, shelving, storage tables, welding. Um relocate some of the welding booths, um and expand how many you have. And that also had kind of reconfigured the A space, so it adds more dedicated space by redesigning the welding space. So and adding some additional storage as well as additional power. Any questions on that? Okay, then where I have air conditioning at primary and intermediate came in at almost six point nine. Now, keep in mind, this also includes like, there's a lot of air handlers there that need to be replaced so that they can handle the air conditioning. And so this also includes all the air handler replacements at the two places. Um the insulation of the chillers piping and um insulation of the ductwork. Some putting some BFDs, variable frequency drives, as well as variable airboxes, so that that you have a lot more control on what goes to the different rooms, and it's a lot um more comfort. Um rezoning the ductwork at the intermediate as well as some data room cooling. Any questions there?
I think Brian can unmute now if he wanted to just jump in and verify that parking lot.
It was.
Was included.
It was included at the intermediate school, correct?
Thank you. Um the next one, indoor air quality as well as energy efficiency came in at two point three. So that's just some heating system upgrades and retrocommissioning, retrocommissioning, I probably, Brian talked about that before. It's just basically going through your systems and making sure they're working as they should be. It brings a lot of energy efficiency. Over time, the systems don't always work as they should, and so going back through them. Um interior lighting upgrades and controls, window replacements at primary and intermediate. Um the kitchen expansion and milk cooler ventilation at the primary, as well as some exterior door replacements at the intermediate. And then lastly, um the deferred maintenance, and that's just stuff that you guys just have not have had enough money to keep up with, so. Asphalt replacements throughout the whole district. Um just roofing, you guys have done a really good job with roofing, there's one last section here at the high school, the center section that needs to be replaced. Um high priority, so basically, in the report, we kind of put together low, medium and high priority of the ceilings, the flooring, the walls, all that, but this basically just includes any of the high priority items. the flooring, the walls, all that. But this basically just includes any of the high priority items for replacement at the primary and intermediate. Um, also replacing the galvanized piping at the intermediate. Um, self-stairware repaired interior doors. Classroom furniture upgrades, it's just an allowance to upgrade some of the furniture throughout the district as well as the loading dot concrete repair. And that came to five point two. Any questions on those?
I guess the bigger question I have is, is there inflation uh factored in to these?
That's a really good question.
We're not gonna be able to start the project today.
Yep, and actually, look at here's, let me write into the next slide, which kind of summarizes it. So if you can see, I know it's kind of hard to read, but if you look at the totals by building, it comes in about twenty-three million. All those numbers that you saw come, they add up to about twenty-three, four. And then below that, you'll see inflation de- design allowance at one point five. So we are, yeah, we're well aware that even if it passed, it probably would be twenty-five construction, a lot of it. And so it is taken into account at that point. And anything that we didn't use would go back to you. So that number right there with the stuff that we showed you, it brings it to twenty-four, nine with the um inflation in there. Okay, so like I mentioned early in this presentation, to keep at fifteen dollars a month on an average house is about twenty-seven, uh twenty-seven million, seven hundred thousand. Is the rough estimate of that number. So the next, the next thing that came in, and this is completely up to you on what, you know, you would want to do. Um, if you add it, now it's just upgrades to the auditorium, okay? It's not like it's one point nine is the auditorium upgrades. So you do that, you do the allowance, that brings you to twenty-seven, one. And so you're still at about the fifteen dollars a month. And then just to show you what it would take to do like turf, we put that in there and you're at twenty-eight, seven. We didn't even add up the the field house because you're way beyond. But you know, from earlier numbers, you put that in and you're right around forty million. That's where that forty million, when Peter was testing kind of the all-in number, that's where that number came from. So we're basing it on the twenty-four, nine here. This just breaks it out. And the cool thing, if you look at um the right-hand totals, it really does space out amongst the three schools. Every school is getting a lot of work, which is kind of cool to see. You don't always see that. So that's neat. Alright, and the things that were not prioritized nor included in the twenty-four, nine. Um, the auditorium upgrades, like I said, that was the extra one point nine. The turf was one point five, the field house. Um, some of the interior finishes, um updates in this room, single-user toilets, fire alarm replacements, some of the exterior door replacements that were not as high priority are not included as well as some of the envelope and miscellaneous site upgrades at primary and intermediate. So that is not included. So that is what I have to show you today. I'm happy Brian is Brian and I are happy to answer questions on this. You have a lot to digest. You know, there's a lot of information thrown at you and if if you want, and Peter's still on too, if anything relates to that as well, he's happy to answer questions.
And let me get Peter so he can unmute as well.
Okay.
Alright, I think I'm unmuted.
Yep, you are. So do you guys have any other questions?
I guess just to clarify, when we're talking that fifteen dollars, seventeen dollars uh per month for household, is that based on the one hundred sixty-one thousand?
Correct, yes.
Peter, I have a question if I could. Um, your expertise, you had said originally that, you know, the the tax tolerance was around an eleven and twelve, eleven to twelve dollar a month increase, but that if we stuck with the priorities, you could go up to fifteen. Um, but then you focused on those top six. What is your professional opinion on on number seven? As it relates to staying within that fifteen, do we get into more of a need versus, excuse me, a want versus need? Or it's still a priority? Like, what is your opinion on that number seven specifically?
It it's seeing the tax impact, I believe, it, correct me, I think it was one point nine million roughly for the it's a one point nine, so typically, if there's wh- what I call a, you know, a red flag issue, and it's, this is not a red flag. This is not at forty-five percent support. You're actually on fifty-eight percent support. Um, we always want that to be twenty percent of the package or less. So it's well below that. It checks that box. The the one thing I am continue to be concerned about after looking at the voting in twenty-three, um, I don't want to give folks any the the, no, the opposition, a- a- any sort of foothold. Um, I think that you can rationally talk about, these are upgrades. Um, I don't think it's a deal killer, my professional opinion. But the older I get, the more conservative I am on these sorts of things, and I really like to play it safe. Um, so I I like being under fifteen more than, more than that. Uh, um, but I would not say absolutely not. Uh, it's, it really is a flip of a coin. The the ta- the tax impact, it would have, you would have to be very cognizant of it in communication, that this is not a major portion of the twenty, it would go up into roughly twenty-seven million. Um, that we're talking, you know, basically less than ten percent i- is for that. Um, and fine arts gets more grace than athletics do in the minds of the public on these sorts of things also. So I I I would not strongly recommend not doing it. Um, within the parameters of what the survey says, if the, if the lowest supported thing still had fifty-eight percent support, um, I would say that it would look overall pretty positive. The one thing that we really can't account for at this point in time is what the economy is going to be on election day.
Follow-up question if I could. Um, you had said uh in early, one of the earliest slides that plus or minus five percent margin of error uh with ninety-five percent confidence. Is this set up uh in such a way that it's, you know, fifty-five point one is what you would be? And then the the five percent gets us to just over fifty percent? Or are we talking, if we stick with the priorities, you know, we're at fourteen, fourteen and a quarter per month, those six priorities. Um, two and a half million dollar operational, uh twenty-five million dollar capital that this is something that you feel confident, obviously you can't guarantee anything, but you know, upper fifties, low sixties percent support. Is that a fair question?
Yes, yeah, no, I I I think, I think it's very fair. And that's the reason the sort of survey is formatted in this way. So we move from the macro to the micro. Um, and we understand what their tolerance is, what things they support, and then test, and that's why I always say we test the all-in number. Because the one thing I can't do is work, you know, I tell, if we tested twenty million and it came back at sixty-three percent, and you said, well, what if we went to thirty-five million? I can't do that with the data. I can do that with this data. You said, you have fifty-three percent at forty million and twenty-two bucks. Knowing that that's double the tax tolerance. Um, I feel very confident, we s- we had it was thirty-one percent that said nothing, uh, meaning that we had sixty to, we had sixty-five percent. And they supported property to increase, high levels of sort, I have every reason to believe that a package um, you're talking at fifteen dollar a month level would be at sixty percent. And that does that does give you a count for the attrition of a campaign, that typical six to eight points. And not every campaign, you know, ti- what we typically, if there's ten elections and vote yes, every district says that they're going to have a really good vote yes, and two out of ten have a good vote yes, and eight out of ten the superintendent's the vote yes on his off-hours or her off-hours. Um, so out of ten, eight of them will regress six to eight points, one will maintain, and one will actually see, exceed the number of the of of the earliest survey, uh, with just an outstanding vote yes. So that also is in play. You know the district best. You know the potential vote yes, the volunteer base on all of those sorts of aspects uh come into play. Um, but I would, I have every confidence to say that you would have sixty percent into the low sixties at fifteen dollars a month, including the top six, potentially even the top seven, at fifty-eight percent support for the fine arts.
Thank you.
Question for Ellie. Uh, the example you used with the percentages, the scenario zero versus scenario one.
Oh, yeah.
Um, was the operating referendum separate in that calculation that came up to twenty-seven, seven? There.
It's included in the
It's included.
Yes.
So the, yeah, these are the numbers for, so the scenario one has the twenty-seven, seven and the two and a half.
Plus two and a half.
Yes.
I was unsure because the twenty-four, nine, seven, five, plus two, five.
Correct.
Did that get us to twenty-seven?
No, no, they're not, they're not additive like, and they're not taxed the same. And yeah, so no, but it does, that number does include both.
So in theory, if that number was twenty-four, nine, seven, five.
It would be less than
Two point five, okay.
Yep, I mean, fourteen something is what I would guess, you know, but yes, it would be less than thirteen.
I know that's a lot of information. Um, the purpose is having a special meeting tonight is to give the board a chance to hear all the information, think about it, and digest it, and then come back on Monday and have uh, have some dialogue on whether or not we wanted to track the resolution. Um, have anything on the agenda to act, act on tonight, but you know, again, if there are any questions or thoughts on this, we certainly are posted for that.
Ellie, just with your experience, and obviously, uh, you talked about the campaign portion of it, which is what we would move into, which is uh, why we have your hopes on board to help with that.
Yeah.
Being able to go to that seventh uh step with the auditorium, and that being essentially two million dollars more, is that something that is easily sold, that, you know, sold easily added on to that would that I don't want to add something that's going to directly affect the positivity of what we're trying to do. Is that something that is easier to get taxpayer buy-in? With it being an auditorium versus uh, you know, athletics field?
I think, I do think it has a higher, and the biggest thing on that, I was kind of saying this earlier when we were talking, when Steve and I were talking, is if it was like a new auditorium, you know what I mean? I would be a lot more concerned. Like, you know, like Peter said, it's a small portion of it. It's less than ten percent. I think you could add it in and safely get, it's run up, it's needed. You could also, even though it's auditorium, you could also look at it as deferred maintenance. You know, like, these are things that have been needed in the auditorium, and they need to be taken care of. So the way that you market it, you know, you could definitely get it to go.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Could I ask another? Peter, um, if you're able to answer with your experience from twenty-three, the question that the board is going to have uh to have to answer, do we have this on the April ballot or the November ballot? Are you able to weigh in on an opinion as to which you would be more confident in?
Can we go back to nineteen ninety-six, and it's a much simpler scenario with Bill Clinton versus Bob Dole? Uh, the April obviously is going to be the presidential primary. Uh, it, it looks like it'll be a one-party uh show, uh horror show. Um, but quite frankly, by April, my guess is everything's going to be settled. Um, th- this, this should play out, who the Republican nominee will be by the end of March, knock on wood. Um, which would lead me to say that April probably is better than November. Um, for communications, for vote yes, for volunteers. Um, your typical political volunteer will be very busy uh in the fall of twenty-four because they'll, they'll, whether it's legislative or presidential, um, those sorts of things, they'll, they'll be focused on that. Um, it's easier to communicate in April. That being said, if it's still a highly contested Republican primary, um, it could, it it would impact. I mean, we, we saw it last April in Wisconsin uh with a district uh on the ballot and during the Supreme Court uh justice vote. Very conservative district. Uh, it would have passed if that was not on, the, that was not the main issue. Um, if they could fail to forty-eight, fifty-two. Um, so I I would, I would say in twenty-four with your data, um, April probably would be better than November.
If I may ask one more, Mr. Board, uh, Monday's meeting, will there be an action item? Is Monday the deadline for us to have action if we want an April question?
That's a great question. Uh, technically, the um action would have to happen on our January twenty-second meeting. Uh, that is when we would adopt, uh, look at voting on adopting the resolutions. Um, for one or two questions, okay? Next, uh, this coming Monday, however, the board would have to vote on directing administration to draft those resolutions. So we would have to have, while not chiseled in concrete by any means, we'd have to have a little bit of a plan on Monday to be able to draft the resolutions for official vote on the twenty-second.
And is that something that can be an actionable item come Monday?
Yes, yes, yeah. Actually, we're going to have some sample draft resolutions from calls of ready for Monday, but it will be our official.
If we're to be on the ballot, has to be, resolutions have to be drafted, approved.
Twenty-fourth is the official date, so technically you could have a special board meeting. Chair, you taking public questions?
We are not.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We will be holding public forums. If this goes through, um, and the board approves resolutions to move forward, and then it'll be on the ballot, there will be upcoming um public forums for, for two weeks.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
But also, I just one final thing as the board kind of contemplates decisions and what, what to potentially include or not to include um, for on a resolution. Uh, anything that we list on the ballot, we are committed to, right? And so all, you know, forty things that Ellie had up there are obviously not going to be included on a ballot. You're going to pick your big-ticket items and then have a general disclaimer of of other needs, okay? We're going to have a plan on what that money is, would be spent for from the capital. Um, but anything that's on the ballot, you have to be committed to. There are inflation and contingencies built into the costs. And so if there are savings over the course of a project, hypothetically, if you did the twenty-four point nine million through uh potential savings, because inflation maybe isn't as high as what they built in or things, bids came in a little lower than what they're anticipating at this point. Or you have some proceeds um by having bond management companies, when you're talking this this dollar amount, you can there are, and I would highly recommend us um look at a bond manager and proceed company that would generate through interest as they release bond money. You would be able to get some money through interest. Between those two things, there's a possibility that there's, there's money left over. And so if you set hypothetically, let's focus on the top six, well, let's make a priority, that if there's any savings or money left over at the end, that that goes towards number seven. Well, let's make a priority, that if there's any savings or money left over at the end, that that goes towards number seven. Maybe you couldn't do one point nine million dollars in, in upgrades to the auditorium, but you can do a million dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars. That is certainly possible and certainly legal and certainly something that we could do within a past.
Another option that if I can throw that out there, on that same note, if you didn't want to go to twenty seven. You could put an allowance, just put an allowance for the auditorium and you can do as many upgrades under that allowance as needed to. Like if you wanted to do twenty six million, I'm just throwing ideas out there, but you could do that as well, it's not like a done deal that you have to do the one point nine.
Presentation, uh, was recorded, we'll get that uploaded and put in, in board docs for both. Monday's meeting for the public as well as tonight's meeting, so it's in two places. And the presentations, the slides are in, um, board docs as well for both the community and the, and board. Thank you, Mr. Leatherman and, and the folks from Texas, Brian and Ellie, great job.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you on behalf of the board. Great, with that, I will maintain a motion to adjourn. Three second.
Oh, second.
I'm sorry.
What?
I saw the article.
A, a connection.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Discussion.
Hi.
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 Thank you for your participation.